Water rates, but could up to sixty-five dollars. But then we have water meters and then we'll actually know what we're actually truly supposed to pay. Or what people should pay for meters, so that amount could go down. And it might not even increase maybe minimally. Who knows, these are variables we don't know. But also to take advantage of rates and everything for the project that we're looking at. Maybe see how we could cut costs with self-performing some of the work if that if able to. Or which some people that are against the project itself are saying you use the black mar well. But then we have the contaminants. I don't know what is the right way to go. I feel that with the opportunity with the state, with the money that they're giving, with the meters. We'll have a good hold of what's happening. I think we could better adjust and take care of our situation at hand in that way. But there's a lot of opposition against it and saying do the black mar well. And after what we just heard and with what the D E C has had to offer with utilizing or possibly taking over the treatment plant. I mean, what is everybody's professional opinion that would be the? I mean, there's so many variables we don't know what can happen and I get that. But we as a village board need some true guidance to help our residents and make a smart investment in the future is what it amounts to.
I have a couple of things I'd like to throw in there. I think you need to look at the history of this whole problem. How did you get into this mess? And part of it, back in early nineties, the springs were proved seriously inadequate in nineteen ninety-one. You you were trucking water and we had a temporary pipeline from Little Valley and it was a nightmare. But at that point, the village invested a lot of money in upgrades to the distribution system and in the COBO well and the black mar well. And in you've got thirty years debt lines on those expenditures. And then you operated with those wells. You operated on the black mar well for a period of time. And nobody liked the water. There was all kinds of complaints about the quality of the water. We want to go back to our springs. So then the village borrowed a whole bunch more money and built two treatment plants out at the end of transmission lines that are a hundred and ten years old. And didn't invest any money in the transmission lines. So you've got a lot of debt now sitting out at the end of the transmission line that was replacing the source you created with the other debt at the COBO and the black mar well. And then you relegated those two sort of standby bases. And one of the things that we tried to do when we described the first phase of this project was to say, okay, let's stop spending money out at the ends. And start focusing in one area and let's get our investment all in one area. If you want to, you know, one of the ways to do that would be to, as Jason said, focus closer to the village. So let's not put any more money into the transmission lines and just use the black mar well. But if you do that, you you're going to once again run into the complaints. People are gonna say, we want the spring water, it's much better water. We don't like the quality of the water from the black mar well.
It sounds cheaper too.
Oh, it's cheap.
Yeah.
That's true. Well, the springs produce water.
Cause you're not pumping.
Well, yeah. All right. Let's add here like.
Here's John's opinion.
Here's my opinion. We have made it three years on our springs and one well. What's another year gonna hurt us? Let's move forward with our get our meters in to get all this other stuff done. If we gotta look into grants and it's possibly out there and it's not gonna cost us our money, just try to push forward. But if the guys wanna rise the the treatment plant down there, do we come back in what? I'm guessing April for another round of samples?
Right, April, May, we'll probably deploy the samplers in April and pick them up.
Okay, let's do another round of sampling to see what our samples are. Things are moving forward. Let's. Let's go for another round of samples. If it moves forward, if it keeps moving forward, it keeps going away. That well's not going no place. And to put it back online without the treatment center, if you guys are comfortable, I'll see about running the treatment center. We still have the well, no well pumps that are on the shop. We can put the pump back in, we can run it back into the system.
Right.
Or we can leave the treatment plant there and if we wanna fire it up after, you know, say this time next year, everything is zero, 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 one. Fire it up and go, fire up the treatment plant and run it and see. We'll have the water, the water will be here.
So my question in regards to that statement though is then why the hell did we even start the process to look into grant money for for water if we're just gonna leave it as is?
We're not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is their system, the way things are on right now, we can go another year.
One, you didn't have any clue what the plume was gonna do when that.
You don't know, you didn't know. It's it's like everything else. It's it's no different than sitting down the slot machine, are you going or are you gonna lose?
But I'll tell you, I like Rick's theory is when's the next one gonna rush through? And I mean, I mean, that's that's a good possibility. I mean, I don't think that the the treatment plant should go away anywhere soon.
Well, no, it should never pull up.
The D C people, leave that there. I mean, that's a necessity to to stay there and it should be operated. It hasn't been running at least a year.
But also though, what about our transmission lines? I mean, they're.
That's something we've gotta look at. We've gotta, you know, the transmission line along that route coming back from that well eventually have gotta be replaced. You know, but it's it's like everything else. We can, if we get a little bit of money, we can get some done. If not, then I guess we'll just have to muddle along with what we got because we haven't got no money. It's like you said, what do you, where do you stop dumping money? You got money in the wells, you got money in the spring lots. We all owe debt on this. So if you're gonna walk away from something, where where does your heart lay? When you wanna walk away from something? Do you wanna walk away from something you say it's contaminated, we don't feel comfortable, we never can use again? Or do you wanna say, okay, we're gonna hopefully this works for the treatment plant and we're gonna walk away from two spring lines?
Can I ask a tech a technical question?
Sure.
Um, I know there was some discussion of the pump being run at two hundred gallons a minute. That was back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Was that before you had a V F D pump or?
No, we hadn't there.
You had it there? I'm just wondering.
Those with the V F D, before they used to throttle back with the valve.
Okay, but um, can you talk about the effect of running the pump at two hundred gallons a minute versus say a hundred gallons a minute? And and how is it, is it a matter of if you ran it at a hundred, it will it will draw the same contamination over it just a longer time? Or will the influence of the well not reach as far? Is it like finite distance it's gonna practically reach?
There's a finite distance when you're running the pump and what rate you're doing it is, it's what its zone of capture is. So at two hundred right now, though, I don't know what that zone of capture is versus a hundred. So what you'd actually have to do is you'd have to put the well on, you'd have to monitor. I'm not even sure if the wells where I have them currently are, what distance it would need to be for a hundred versus two hundred, are they useful or are they not? You you kinda have to run some tests and do something like that.
Yeah.
But the zone of capture, yes, changes depending what's a hundred gallons a minute versus two hundred. It would be significantly different.
Right, significantly less.
Right. The one hundred versus two hundred.
Yeah, so if we were running the, if we had to run the well, black mar well, we ran it at a lower flow rate, it would have a lower probability of drawing the the plume over to us right away.
It would be in the meantime for sure. And.
Well, let's go ahead and say we could run the well at a hundred gallons a minute.
Well, it's a lot easier to think. I'd rather see it run for three days at a hundred gallons a minute than a day and a half to two hundred gallons a minute. Cause your worst chance of moving something.
I still think that the village needs to obtain seventy to eighty gallons a minute to sustain itself, not the the incredible amount that we've got now, so.
And that's what the phase one, putting the residential meter and the distribution.
If you go back to your chart and shows the the levels are, I mean, it's it's possible when, cause you just did a test today, you said?
Right.
So how long? Right.
We called it for the samples, right.
How long does that take to get back?
About a month.
So it's possible you could get that back and, I mean, fifteen was at one ten. The last time was at thirty-five.
Right.
Now, a year ago, it was at twenty. You're liable to see no detect there, no?
Well, to be honest, I would be surprised if we saw non-detect. I think you're gonna still see something in fifteen, but could it be ten, could it be forty? I don't know. I would think it's gonna be somewhere between those numbers. I would be surprised if it came back non-detect that quick. Some of these other ones, can I see test well one come back non-detect? Yeah, I think I wouldn't be surprised with that one. But you don't normally see, this is kind of the progression you're gonna see of eleven to a five, the singles. You don't normally see something from thirty-five to nothing. It's just, there's certain levels of jumps normally.
How much um, are your springs making right now?
This very moment? Probably somewhere in the range of about ninety gallons, I don't need to be exact.
And how low do they dip at the worst?
This is about the worst spread that I've, I mean, Jason will tell you, John will tell you that I've, you know, never seen lower. This Mayo was, or I'm sorry, Kelly Summit is at forty-one gallons a minute right now, which is the lowest I've ever seen it.
Right.
And Mayo, which includes the Kenyon Springs that were rebuilt, is at fifty-four gallons a minute.
So just. You get more out of.
More out of Mayo. I've seen Mayo go down to five and six gallons a minute.
Yeah, I know, I know Mark and Jason will remember all this and, I mean, many of the board members are new, but maybe Ben will remember this. But when, when they first had to take the black mar well offline, I mean, there was a real history of these springs during like a a dry summer, production dropping right off. If there was a drought, we were worried about there not being enough water for this village. The COBO well could not supply what they needed.
Right.
And so that's why we embarked on this whole path of the whole treatment system and and nobody envisioned that it would ever run that kind of money. It just went wild. Yeah, the the twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars or whatever it was that the D E C gave the village and then.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. The village forces went out and did those repairs to the Mayo Road Springs.
That's why Mayo's up to fifty-three.
Right. Dramatically improved the yields of those springs and they needed that for decades, obviously. You do the same thing up at Kelly Summit and you're gonna, we all know, you're gonna tremendously improve your yield up there. And we've been fortunate that we haven't had a drought summer in the last three years since this all happened. I mean, you put that one slide up there and said, yeah, they've been able to operate on the springs in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen and now fifteen.
Just using COBO well this summer.
Yeah, and and we.
Just recently started stuff.
Yeah, they they had, you know, well, we had the wettest June month of June in history this past summer. You know, we've been fortunate, but what if two thousand and sixteen turns out to be a, you know, a drought?
Ninety-one.
Yeah, and but it's nice to know that the black mar mount well is still there. You can still turn it on anytime you need. And if we have to, we can make the treatment system work.
Yeah, we're not, we're not throwing it away.
And I know that your your big dilemma right now as a board is, do we not borrow money and invest in the transmission lines and the spring improvements? And just rely on this? And like Mark said, the quality of the water and it's cheaper to produce from the springs because you don't have to pump it. I think, looking generations down the road, you just acquired all the Kelly Summit land up there. You've got the treatment plants, you know, and I think it's worth applying for, you know, the grant and all the interest loan money and seeing what. You're not gonna have that debt forever. Eventually it'll get paid off.
And there's still no smudge deck, so it's giving good water.
That's right. So, yeah, I I personally, you're asking a professional opinion. I still think it's worthwhile for the village to invest in the transmission line to keep the Kelly Summit Springs.
Yeah, but how, how do we swallow going almost two million dollars in that?
You mean to, what, total?
Total. I mean, we're we're over a billion right now.
Right.
If we keep going, I mean, I don't know.
Do you wanna have crappy water and, I mean, we, there's so many variables with, if if they were, and I I haven't looked at the sheet in a long time.
But if they were to qualify under hardship for state revolving loan fund, what would be the percentage of grant versus loan?
Um, that's determined by a target service charge, so it's not a fixed.
Yeah.
And.
That's why I'm saying it's worth, I think it's worth it to go through the process.
The water grant.
I agree with you to go through the process because we've gotta look at all the different alternatives.
Right.
And and then see what's the best choice. And and right now, we got one foot on the dock and one foot on the on the boat and the wind's blowing.
Right.
And. I hope that's.
Keep down down that path and like John said, you know, we can make it work like this for another year. Just keep our fingers crossed we don't have a drought next summer and by then.
Well, it's not just a drought. I mean, I mean, we got issues that.
And hope that we don't have.
If if the pipe doesn't break in the swamp, I mean, or something doesn't happen somewhere that we can't find it. I mean, that's, it might be.
But if that happens, we're still gonna give you an emergency authorization to term the water.
Right, and some oil water. Well, it wouldn't have to be with the treatment.
Drink.
No, we could do it with the treatment.
Oh, with the treatment, yeah. But you didn't manage your, what was it? Well, oh, what I think, I think you have to, you're not at a point you have to make a decision. You gotta wait and see what the money's that situation's gonna be. Um, your springs are gonna, they're starting to come back soon, usually historically, November, December, they're coming back. And you you just gotta kinda ride this out, but you have to, there's certain things you have to keep doing so you're up, leave your options open. And, you know, beginning to move forward on the phase one work that you have a grant for already, you got a six hundred thousand dollar grant. You gotta, you gotta keep moving forward.
Oh, yeah, we still. I think, I think it's safe to say, you know, we've all seen the water wasted up at Kelly Summit. You can probably double your yield up there by redoing those springs.
No, let me ask you this, so. So, lo and behold, whatever, we decide however, whichever way we go. But if black mar well cleans up and we can run it and everybody's happy and say, okay, never mind so much of the springs. What about the distribution lines that's drained, black mar water off to the people that are getting it now? It's still the same line, it's still a hundred and ten year old line. Are we gonna say to them, people, see ya?
That's a, that's a, that's a very serious issue, right, that he's bringing up right now.
Cause I know there's some people that there is, the line goes through their land, says the village will provide a lot. So we just can't walk away and say, see ya?
Most of those say if the village is still using that piece of the water system, at least from a couple of reasons that I.
Well, I understand that too, but it's.
But.
So would they have to just draw their own, do their own well then at that time?
Well, it's funny, cause Mark and I went through a project like this over in Machias where they had, they had to abandon an old spring they had. There were people on that spring line.
Twelve of them.
Yeah, what that, what the village wound up doing was there, because they, the people said that, you know, we were promised water. So the village actually did a contract and they drilled twelve wells for these people and they're all up on their own wells now.
And it, and it averaged out to about twelve thousand dollars a well. Whoa. Whoa. And and the reason for that is because it, the, when the municipal district is doing it, you know, they're paying for the other wage rate and all the things that the village, so.
Yeah, but look at this way, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is quite a lot of pipe work to dump too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, in the Cape, Machias was a whole, and they didn't have a treatment plant for their springs, so they had to build a treatment plant for the springs.
I mean, overall, I mean, and and no, nobody wants their water rates to go up, but if you went to the well, you start paying the the rates. I mean, you use more more chlorine, which isn't a big deal, more whatever. The water's much harder, so people be complaining about their toilets turns rustyish and all that stuff again. But the cost monthly over what it is at the springs is is huge. I mean, that's that's a huge portion of the whole in the term. So if you cost you an extra twelve thousand dollars a year, just an electric. I mean, that, that's a payment you can make onto having spring water.
You're saying it's cheaper.
Yeah, the only, the only thing, you know what costs us for spring water? It costs us to run the Webmaster two thousand, that can't be only pennies a day in a in a chlorination pump.
You're probably hundred dollars a month per spring lot. To produce and that's the chlorinating, the electric to go up there.
You heard me said, we can burn through six, seven hundred dollars a month and what it does?
Well, that's when we don't like, we never ran all day, every day. We never use that as our constant. We always had our springs offsetting. So, I mean, you can start getting into, I mean, I, the, I run, right now in Goan, I run one well and it runs our three thousand a month is what what we pay.
I forget back when Danny was around the water system, how much electric bill per place?
I don't remember.
Did they, I knew that.
But I know.
It was a concern, cause it was expensive.
But I know it's.
Where you were running the wells more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's the same size horse pump that we have here that I have there, it's it's three, about three thousand a month.
I mean, the state has invested a lot of money in this investigation and the treatment plant. And yes, it's expensive to run the well with the electricity cost for the pumps and that's why I'm thinking that it's still a wise choice for the village to look into, you know, making the improvements at the Kelly Summit Springs with the grant money you already have. And then follow through on the application for state revolving loan funding so you can find out exact, then we'll have the meters in, we'll know exactly what your demands are and.
So say, so just a quick question, say we, so we do that, but then for just majority of the board that time thinks that it's just too much to take on this project. Do we still keep those funds from C D B G and and all that?
C C D B G has committed their money. And they, and they say that the project we described that we're going to spend their money on achieves the goals they were trying to achieve by giving you the money.
Okay.
So that that you can do.
And that's a hundred percent grant.
Okay, so we're good on that six hundred.
Well, it's, it's, it's about, it's six hundred thousand dollar grant and fifty thousand a loan.
The the original project estimates, six hundred fifty thousand. I mean, you could try to scale the work you do at the springs, you know, but.
I mean, you can do a lot. I'm a, I'm a big guy to self-perform them springs.
Well, we too.
We could save a lot of money by having.
Not paying for really.
Well, one, one thing about um, the HUD money, the C D B G money, is that they're the most rigid organization I've ever seen. And, you know, doing something forest account means doing it with yourself might not be so easy to accomplish with their money.
What about with D W S R F?
Okay, well, let's look at it this way, if you're saying six hundred fifty thousand and do the work, and so that's fifty thousand, we've gotta put for fifty thousand. We can go up and do a whole lot of work up there and then.
Well, that was my next question is, if we get six hundred thousand and fifty thousand, that is our end. If we get five hundred, say we only use five hundred and twenty-five of it, do we still pay the fifty thousand?
Um, no, I mean, basically.
Do we have to spend the six hundred thousand now?
Do you have to? Well, you could tell them like you keep it, I suppose.
Well, I know what you're saying.
Well, you just got six hundred, five hundred seventy-five thousand and, I mean, that cut in saving the sum of your your money. I mean, would it be worth doing some of the work to save? Obviously, the meters, I don't believe there's any part of that's worth doing yourself, but.
Could we build a reimbursement?
What we did for twenty-three thousand dollars, I think, was pretty significant.
Oh, yeah. If if the one point two million or whatever it was the state spent on that treatment system, if the village could've, the village could've replaced their transmission line, we wouldn't be.
I asked for that money and no treatment plant.
They, we wouldn't be having any.
That's a good question. The way the, the way the HUD money works is that you get your bills in each month and you submit them to them and then they, you set up an account, they wire money into your account to pay the bills for the month.
Does reimbursement?
Well.
You're never.
No, it 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 happens fast enough that you get the bill in, you have your board meeting, you approve the bill, you submit it and you can pay the bill before the next board meeting. So you'll have it. So the money turns around pretty quick.
Once. You just submit a claim to draw off the grant and they send it right to you.
So you don't have to do interim funding.
Oh, okay, okay.
If it should give you a whole wad of them.
No. I'm wound up now.
And 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 if if we can get the Kelly Summit Springs rebuilt, increase the yield and hope that there's not a transmission line failure or drought next summer. Um, it's, it's gonna buy you another year's time. They'll do, they'll do some more testing on the black mar well, but keep the black mar well off and let the plonkey migrate and buy.
Yeah, we'll say along by it.
Is there an expected life for the treatment cargo container? Probably one turn over.
Uh, yeah. But I.
Well, let me ask you this, will the state continue to maintain the maintenance and cleaning the treatment duration?
It's my understanding that anything that goes on in the treatment side of that is our, is our responsibility. So maintenance, programming.
I mean, it's like, even if we don't use it, it should go in and get exercised and and maybe clean in the spring.
Well, it it's, last November, it was totally drained. The, every pump was drained, every reservoir was drained, it's dry. So, I mean, it's just not about.
Then you don't have to worry about anything freezing and breaking and you don't have to, nobody has to worry about paying for any heat for the water.
Uh, there is heat on it, you know. Mostly for the electronics and that kind of stuff. So if their springs continue to degenerate going into this winter, it could be reactivated.
We would need a couple of days, possibly a week.
Like a lead time?
But yeah, it could be brought online whenever you need it. So it's, it's there. You're not gonna end up trucking water, which should make you sleep a little better.
Bad memories now.
So what, what's our current timeframe around the six hundred thousand dollar C D B G grant right now? And we got our final approvals?
We're still waiting on the.
Any other views and all that?
Wait, yeah, which ends what, the end of the, beginning of next month, is it?
Well, Jake feels with that.
Um, I mean, we, they presented their comments and we basically addressed all of them except for Army Corps. And we got a letter back from Army Corps, which we sent over to them. And I played a little phone tag with them over the last couple of days trying to discuss it with C D B G. Cause the letter that Army Corps gave us was relatively simplistic and it, it may not have fully addressed the issue. I might have to go, we might have to go back and push Army Corps to give us something more substantial. They pointed us towards a nationwide permit and it appears like C D B G might not, might not allow you to use nationwide permit. But basically, they're, they're raising the question of are there wetlands in the way for transmission mains in phase two of the work? Which is a little bit difficult to point nail down.
Because we don't even know it. Yes, there are, but we may not work on that transmission.
Right.
But we certainly would try to avoid them when and if we're designing those pipes, but we're not at that point right now.
Right.
So we're trying to, we're trying to get the funding agency, C D B G to, or O C R to to sign off on saying that's an, I mean, no, we'll have to address in phase two.
See, that's, that's one of the things you make so much trouble with them is, is they're saying, we're only gonna give you money for this first phase. We agree that the first phase satisfies our project's objectives and that's all you have to do. If you don't do the rest of it, then we still have accomplished what we wanted to accomplish to help the poor people in your community. But before we let you start on it, you gotta look at the environmental effects of the whole project, even though you don't know if you're gonna do the rest of the project and you don't even know this. So it's kind of difficult to do. So we tried to, you know, we sent out letters to all of the agencies like Fish and Wildlife and Shippo and all of, and we asked for comments from all of them back. And we got comments and we thought we were all set. And then a new person took over the project, the O C R. And they said, well, what about Tipo?
Oh, when Charlie Fillion wasn't no longer the guy.
Charlie's still watching over the whole thing, but there's a.
There's a, currently, because you're in the Aboriginal territory of the San Jacinto, you have to have their tribal historic preservation officer look at it as well. But they didn't tell us that in the beginning of this whole thing. Um, and so when we called them, they said, well, yeah, whatever Shippo said, we're fine with that. But now they, you know, we're, we're still tripping on this.
That's a, there, there was an issue with flood clean in the village that HUD won't allow expenditure of their funds on properties in the flood plain. Well, there's two houses that we identified as possibly being in the flood plain.
One of them.
And.
You gotta, if we make them by flood insurance, then they.
Put a meter in their house.
So the meter could be so.
Do you have flood insurance?
I don't think so.
Right, so they basically said we either, from mediation, we had to either get proof of flood insurance from the homeowners or what I suggested to them and it sounds like might make the most sense is that the village would buy the meter for that house outright. It's a two hundred and fifty dollar meter instead of.
Well, then.
And then charge it against the homeowner.
Ben and Brian, Ben and Brian haven't even heard about the tree bats yet.
Oh. Well, they're gone now, don't talk about that.
That's, that's what, that's what our.
That's what, that's what, that's what, originally was the tree bat, not the northern long-eared bat that suddenly became.
He's gone, he's gone.
Bottom line.
He's gone, he's gone.
They're gone. They're out here.
Well.
The, the bottom line is that I hope to buy in November, working available.
Yeah, exactly.
We've worked out the Army Corps issue.
Okay.
We're actively moving on that.
Moving back to.
In other words, as soon as they clear five hurdles, they put up five more hurdles in front of you.
That's why, you know, we talked to them.
Yeah, we got the extension.
We talked to them at one point.
It's called career.
A forest account work and they got real quiet on the other end of the phone and that's why.
Well, the forest, no, they, they said that labor, they explained, I went over labor with them quite clearly. And they'll, they'll reimburse you for the hourly rate of the road employees. It's all carefully documented. You know, they'll, they'll wanna see time logs when you're working on this project, not your normal duties. But again, like I said, it's the hourly rate, not the benefits, not, not any of those that extra fringe. And what they haven't addressed with them yet is how do we handle equipment and materials? You know, can we just buy those under state accounting bid? You know, what materials will we be able to do that way? Um, and equipment, if you don't have the appropriate equipment in-house, how do we have to go about getting rentals on that? And how do they reimburse that or do they allow reimbursement for rental equipment? So those are some of the questions that.
And that's all part of the forest account work.
If the village thinks they can apply enough manpower to to accomplish the work in the timeframe necessary, then we, we would answer some of the other questions and then be ready to go to town next, uh, next year.
But you gotta cut the trees, you gotta cut the trees down before the leaves come back.
Yes, yes.
The tree clearing has to be done once we get the environmental side off and before, um.
Environmental side off.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't do the trees yet, or if you do, don't tell us.
What trees? Trees, trees.
They're trees then?
Before the bats come back, you gotta, the trees have to be gone.
Yes.
The village is in the March, so, which the trees would have to be, you know, cleared by.
I mean, they don't have to, I, you gotta cut them down, you know, it doesn't mean you have to have it all cleaned up, but.
And there may not be that extensive a clearing to do.
How big of an area do we have to do?
Not a deal to clear.
There's, so we walked up through, there's about five trees we figured we should take.
Yeah, I mean, it, it depends on how you look at it, if you go up there and cherry pick trees in order to work around specific springs, it could be pretty minimal. We told Fish and Wildlife, it could be up to, I, I believe, I don't have the letter with me, I believe we told them up to two acres of tree clearing. Um, because you don't wanna, you don't wanna underestimate what.
And you wanted to improve the driveway access up there, so it's not so steep.
Right.
No, I thought it was worth it.
Can't really wait to wag and butcher the property that's left. Well, it's because the village, the area immediately around the springs, he didn't know, so those trees weren't.
So, that, yeah, the right.
So, how would they butcher those?
See, when, when he went up there and cleared everything, he didn't have to worry about that.
No, he didn't, he was, and then he walked away.
They shut his dad's.
Jake, do we need to republish the Fonzie?
After, after we get this final, uh, clarification from Army Corps, so yes, that'll be coming.
So, anyway. So, it's to somewhat raise what everybody's saying here of the, um, professionals here, that what we're saying is, we need to keep up, we need to forward on all fronts, really, that's what the, the suggestion. Yeah, and, and one of the things that I, when I look back at the history here, 'cause, you know, after the last meeting, there was a, a presentation on how much, how much, how bad a financial situation Cataragas seems to be in compared to other villages. Well, back in the seventies, I worked for an engineer in Gwanda, and he had done a, a complete design for us sewers for Cataragas, and Cataragas had the opportunity for eighty-seven and a half percent grant funding, to put sewers in throughout the village, but the village said, no, we can't, we can't pay for that twelve percent debt, so they didn't do anything, that all went away, many years later, the village had to pay much more than twelve and a half percent of a much simpler treatment system, or sewage collection system, that is what you have now. So, by putting it off and not doing it, and you look at it historically, was that fiscally responsible? Now, that's the question you gotta ask yourself, so, the other thing, like, um, in the early nineties, you built that tank, that was one of the last uncovered water, drinking water reservoirs in the state, you know, the village just put it off, put off, put off, put off, put off, and now you're stuck, you're paying for that still now. And so you can't do a future water project, 'cause you're saddled with all this debt, and had they done it when everybody else was doing it back in the sixties and seventies, it would've already been paid for, and you wouldn't have had this, this kind of a problem, so putting, putting it off and putting it off doesn't always solve the problem, it just puts it onto a future water place, and that's, you know, that's where you are, and not.
I don't argue with it, but I'll go back even further, my father-in-law was the town supervisor, and in the fifties, he said, why don't we start putting money aside for the water system and the improvement, this is the fifties, and he said, no, 'cause we wanna just keep the taxes low.
Right.
And, uh.
Boards still do that, you see it all.
And here we are, sixty years in.
You're not the only village that's done that, and, um, there's villages around that have lines that are in worse shape than yours, all throughout their, the village, you know, and, and they're just, they're doing the same thing that Johnson does, whoa, we'll do another year, we'll do another year, we'll do another, you know, and eventually, that has to be dealt with. And you've got, uh, another twenty years to pay on those treatment plants, and so by just saying, we're not gonna spend any money on transmission lines, you're just basically waiting until you have a problem, in that if, if the transmission line breaks out in the swamp in the middle of January, you could drain your tank back into that swamp, and it's not just you're gonna lose the springs.
Seen that happen, haven't we, John?
I had to fix that line in the middle of that swamp in the middle of winter.
Yes, you know, so, you know, there's, it's, it's a threat to your, your community's water supply at all times, you know, it's, it's not happening, so I sound like I'm just making noise, but, you know, those lines are old, and I've been on other.
They're not making sense, it's, it's, you know, we've got a time bomb.
Well, I believe right now you're wasting half the water you're making.
You mean from what's leading the plants to what?
From what's leading the plants to what's going to the residents.
And, and Mark's pointing out that the longer you defer making a decision on some of these things, you're just, I guess, it's a time bomb, it, it's gonna happen, we've already seen leaks on the transmission line that we couldn't locate for several days, and it caused a real problem.
Well, hell, just in the cost alone, what was it back when we first talked about, when we spoke with Mary that one phone call, that the original scope back when this was all drawn up was three point three.
Two point six, well, yeah.
Three point six, but.
Construction costs escalated.
Oh, every year. So, now we're up to four million, if, if that was based on the full project, so it's gone up significantly.
Over you, you, or cost.
And I understand everybody's same, but the problem to look at too, you look from the other side of the fence too, is that there's a lot of people that struggle to live here as it is, and you go raising up their rates, and nobody will live here anyway, 'cause they can't afford it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a lot to take on to make that kind of decision, that's, it's a double edged sword.
It's like, yeah, it's like I said, we've gotta proceed forward, but we gotta proceed in a manner that doesn't, it doesn't bury us, it doesn't bury the taxpayer. Can't fly in line of law.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we, maybe we pick out the worst spots we should fix and get them fixed, and hope the rest of it stays together until we get some warm weather or something, or another six hundred thousand dollars comes down the road.
Well, the, the grant that you just applied for, the New York State Water Grant, that's a, a new program that just was announced this year, you've got your application, you got a good application in, and, you know, that's the kind of.
How much, how much do we have in capital improvements for water?
Zero. Zero.
So, John, the theory of fixing a hundred feet a year is non-existent.
Well, I know, that's no good.
So, the only, the only way, if anything happens, and say something does break underneath the road or somewhere, if we can't find it and grant or, or plan for it, is to borrow money as soon as it happens to fix it.
Well, I know, since where we're at, I mean, it's a, and it's a horrible place to have to be.
But when we do have to fix it, say, 'cause something does break or whatever, the cost is gonna be more than what we could do right now, and if we continue to, and I'm just saying that.
So, what if it doesn't have a break?
It's a.
No, it's just, you never know, it's an above ground, no.
You guys should write another.
Yeah, what I'm saying, is that we don't know when, so it's not.
You guys should write another letter to Kathy Young, and maybe another one point two million, drop down the sky.
Yeah, but they didn't drop where we planned it, it's. That fell in a little box that Mark and I argued against.
But the thing is that it's there.
Right, it was just, it's a good safety.
Yeah, it was perfect. Yeah, fortunately, right now, we're in good shape, right now, knock on wood, we're in good shape, we have water, and we don't have a problem with water, we have all that we possibly want, we got a treatment plant that'll work down there, and the Black Marwell, it's there, if we need it, it's there.
But, John, and this is why I, I, I say it all the time, but you're losing fifty percent of your water now, maybe five years ago, we were losing forty-five percent, so now in five more years, we're gonna lose fifty-five percent, and then sixty, sixty percent, and then seventy percent, and then guess what, there's no possible where our springs can make enough water to cover what we're losing, I mean, leaks don't ever fix themselves.
No.
And you've seen a small leak in the caper line go from a needle shooting out to a pencil overnight.
I don't, I, I agree, I don't, I don't.
I mean, you can, you can do what you want, but.
We don't know which way to go.
The military search is one, two, you know.
I thought what Mark said would've hit it right.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree, we just can't walk off.
We just can't walk off, like we gotta do this, it always costs more.
We gotta do something.
But now his point's good too, isn't it?
It is, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we gotta look for break in as much as we can.
Absolutely. We gotta fump the bushes for everything we can chase every round in all the.
But then the next year or two, all these great applications, you'll know where you're staying, then you can make an educated decision.
That's true. And the next board meeting, November ninth, Municipal Solutions, who's the fiscal advisor that's working with the project team here, intends to, uh, come to that meeting and be able to explain to you guys a little more clearly the, the big picture of the, the funding we've applied for, what other funding is available, and how that impacts doing a project like this, um, explain the, the grant we have from CDVG, so, they're gonna come to that meeting and hopefully, you know, shed a little light on it in a way that you guys can all understand it fully, and that I think will help with, with making decisions.
Yeah, one of the questions they can answer for you better than we can is, how are they gonna determine how much grant you're, you're gonna be eligible for? And a lot of them use a target service charge and things like that, and the target service charge is calculated based on median household income and, and things like that.
I just don't understand how we don't qualify for the hardship of zero percent, just, um.
Well, any other year you would've, but Westchester County took all the money last year. Basically, that's what they.
Our, our M H, or, what, yeah, our median household, yeah, our M H I is three, three thousand.
It's don't matter, it don't matter, we could be the worst shape in the world, and if something happened in New York City, you know what we're gonna get?
I meant as far as the hardship.
The target service charge.
Where the red hood is stuck, you know?
I mean, is everybody, is everybody's got a grant to fix something?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good.
Mary, right?
So, and you're able to go ahead and, and, uh, you can give that to, uh, rows and rows you can disperse? Can we get that actually possibly put up on the website, do you think?
Yeah.
For more of the trade, can you access that?
On Mary Chapel. It's at the regular, that I believe, you all can, our village.
Yeah, thank you.
You start all getting, realize how big the L F N is, just looking at.
They're just, yeah, Washington raised at the last board meeting, that.
And I appreciate.
I'm an engineer, and I think she can answer.
We beat up over the years, financially, you know, a lot.
Where the village is, I think, at all times.
So, what you did here.
What the different fund, 'cause frankly, target service, anyone's gonna like to hear where the state is to say, the state is gonna say five hundred dollars. They're gonna, they're gonna say.
Serve a brown.
You got a lot of.
The, uh, New York State Water Program is a little bit of a black and white, so new, it was announced in one paper we applied for, and, which don't trade on it, but. Mary is gonna be able to, I can't, but, um, that's a limited, that's money that may available, so it's gonna distribute over two years, and if we got in right at the first year.
Okay, but you're gonna actually make a motion.
Making a motion for your, 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 your recess, uh, we're making. Well, I'll second it, I guess, Rose, I second it, all my papers, I, I, two names carried for that one.